Good morning, everyone. Happy Wednesday. Coming to you live. Thank you for joining Town Hall today. My name is Danielle Lard and I'm a professor in the School of Media Design, teaching in music industry arts, performing arts, and public relations. And it's such a joy to be playing music for you this morning. We just built this live loop. We've been playing some cover tunes, some original tunes this morning, while all of our friends are getting some coffee. And so that was "Big Jet Plane." I've been working really hard on my next release, coming out so soon. And this is a tune off of that called "All The Things."
Just a quick announcement, we're gonna get started with the Town Hall in a couple minutes. If everyone wants to take their seats, Joanne, if you want to start closing those doors. Thank you, everybody. Danielle, I'll let you play one more song and I think we'll get started. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much, Susan. One more, one more original. And we'll be quick about it. This is "The World Wouldn't Be the Same." We've all got that voice inside our head saying, "You can't do this. You can't do this." But you overcame. You did the thing. Showing all us, "We can do this. We can do this." Oh, the world wouldn't be the same without you, dear. Without you in it. And all the world wouldn't be the same without you here. Without you now. Thank you all so much for listening. I'm Danielle Lard. You can catch me over in N-Building. But for now, huge thanks to the events team for having me once again.
That last song kills me every time. Oh, my God. Thank you very much, Danielle. Everyone, Danielle Lard. Thank you very much. Well, welcome, everyone, for joining us first for our coffee break that we just had and to our Town Hall for those of you who are joining in person as well as online. Hearing a little bit of feedback, I'm not sure if that's just me here a little bit. We'll adjust that. First, I'd like to begin this Town Hall by acknowledging that we are gathered for this event on the traditional, unceded, unsurrendered territory of the Inishnaabe Algonquin people. As guests, we are honored to be able to gather on this wonderful place. And we give thanks to the generations of Inishnaabe Algonquin people who have and continue to take care of this beautiful land. We recognize and we appreciate their historic connection to this land. And we also value the contributions that other First Nation, Inuit, Native people have made in both shaping and strengthening this community, our province, and our country. And I would like to also recognize that a couple weeks ago, we had National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. And this was a wonderful opportunity to learn more about this place, our indigenous lands that the Inishnaabe Algonquin people have lived on for millennia. And to continue in our own ways, collectively and personally, to reconcile by taking action. Action that can range from sitting around a sacred fire, hearing stories from a storyteller or knowledge keeper, hearing music from the drummers that we had here, partaking in the legacy of Vol Foundation display that we had in ACE, or taking time to go to walk to our Mamadosen Center, talking to the staff, talking to students, and immersing yourself in indigenous culture again. We're in a continuous journey. And I encourage everyone to do their part to reconcile. Thank you. Because we're doing this in a hybrid fashion here, we've got this particular setup. And you let us know what's working for you and what's not. We'll take your feedback and we will adjust future Town Halls accordingly. So I have a couple of housekeeping items, mostly for the people who are joining us via the Zoom webinar. So bear with me here. If you have any technical questions or concerns, please reach out through the chat box and the events team will assist you. Closed caption is available by clicking the closed caption button on the main bar at the bottom of your screen. For our question period, we encourage participants to ask their questions live by raising their virtual hand. When you're selected, you can then unmute yourself to ask your question live. We also have the Q and A tab that's still available as well. Now, the instructions for in-person are a little simpler. Just raise your hand. And we'll have somebody with a mic that will come and provide you the mic. And it's important because the people online won't be able to hear you unless you have the mic. So wait till you have the mic and then you can ask your question live. And again, to everyone who want to make sure we make this a safe place for everyone. So let's make sure we keep our college values of caring, learning, integrity, and respect top of mind. And if time is limited and we can't get through all the questions this morning, please ask your supervisor, your one-up, either your chair, your manager, your dean or director or VP, so that they can help you find an answer to your question. We do have some presentations this morning on our agenda. And so I would ask that you hold your questions after those presentations. Chances are, some of what you will hear may answer some questions you may have had otherwise. I will now like to introduce the panel that's with me today for the Town Hall. Chris Jensen, our Senior Vice President Academic. Diane McCutcheon, our VP of HR. Tracy McDougall, Director of the President's Office of Communication and Government Relations. Dwayne McNair, VP Finance and Admin. Laura Stanbrad, VP Student Services. I feel like we're going back and forth here. I'm not sure if that's done on purpose here. Mark Savankov, VP of Advancement and Strategy. And he'll have to sneak out partway through our Town Hall. So Ian Lewer, Director of Philanthropy, will be here as well to sub in for Mark if there are any questions for him. Mark Leduke, Executive Director of Academic Operations and Planning, will be joining us online. Grant Perry, our CFO, Chief Financial Officer. Where's Grant? Is he here? Maybe he's online. Okay, we'll make sure that he's geared up. David Soltes, Director of People and Culture, will be joining us online. Sarah Gawain, I know Sarah's here. I saw her earlier. Sarah, there you go, front row. Equity Diversity and Inclusion Specialist. And our very own Chris Hawn, Dean of ACE and Perth Campus, will be acting as our moderator for our Q and A. So thank you all, panelists, for being here to help us out this morning. So as always, I'd like to begin our Town Hall with a couple of good news stories. And these ones are wonderful to share with the community. First one, and it's interesting, they were in quick succession, one day apart, on the 29th of September and the 30th. So first one is our Alumni of Distinction Award Event that was held in the Students' Commons Theater. This was an absolute fantastic celebration. It was an in-person event. And we celebrated 11 recipients, 10 alumni, who received awards in their respective fields. And it was terrific. It was a high-class event. The comments we received from the award recipients, their families, the people who gathered for the event was absolutely heartwarming. It was fabulous to be able to celebrate their achievements and their community-building accomplishments. So great event all in all. And a big shout out to Mark and the Advancement Team for this wonderful event. Thank you. And Barry, where's Barry? I know you was here earlier. Barry at the back. Awesome job. Thank you. The next highlight I would like to present to you is remembering the children art installation that is here in our Ishkodawin courtyard. So as I said, on September 30th, this was National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. The college, through our TRI office, unveiled an art installation honored the children, the victims and survivors of residential schools. This is a permanent installation that was commissioned to act as a reminder. And it's a powerful reminder. If you haven't seen it, I really encourage you to spend some time to walk the grounds of Ishkodawin and reflect when you see this particular art installation. I think it's breathtaking and sobering at the same time to see those little moccasins hanging from the forged iron steel structure. And it's beautiful and at the same time, an opportunity to reflect. So this unveiling was part of a larger recognition of National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. And again, take the time. The artists would love it. The artist was Barry Ranger. He spent some time describing how he developed the structure based on drawing that Ron McLeister and the TRI team produced. And did a wonderful, wonderful job. And we're grateful to have it present on our campus. Our agenda today, again, as I said, as a formal component, we're going to see some presentations this morning and then move to our Q and A. And the discussions will take a range of topics, including enrollment. We often do this at our Town Halls. We'll talk a little bit about financials and the budget. We'll talk about EDI, Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. And we'll talk also about our flexible work arrangement. So I'll now turn it over to Chris Jensen, Senior Vice President Academic, to start us off. Chris?
Thank you, Claude. Good morning, everyone. Really is nice to see everyone. I'm going to turn it over to Mark Leduke to go through the presentation in just a minute. But just to acknowledge that what Mark will be presenting is some fairly sobering data on how we've been doing around enrollment this year. That said, I am so pleased and so proud and quite frankly dumbfounded with the level of effort that the college as a whole took to try to help us get our enrollment numbers. We have changed how we approach things. We have added new programming. We increased sections. We went from virtual to face-to-face and then back to virtual when the rules changed on us yet again. We've been through a true roller coaster ride. And I want to take the moment and acknowledge everybody and say thank you for your efforts. They are greatly appreciated. And with that, I'll turn it to Mark and stand here and play Vanna White while he goes through the presentation. And so I think, ready for the next slide, please?
Great. Thanks very much, Chris. Good morning, everyone. Wish I was there in person. Unfortunately, a little under the weather. So Chris mentioned I'll be providing a high-level update on our fall enrollment results as well as how Winter '23 is shaping up at the current moment. So this slide really shows our Fall Day 10 results. On the left-hand side, you see four years of enrollment for the various fall terms. And then on the right-hand side, I've just indicated just some comments that I'll walk through. So if we start with the numbers, our results for Fall, 18,101 full-time students. When you look at on a year-over-year basis, actually had a positive plus 3% improvement. So we are gaining some ground compared to last year. But unfortunately, still behind our pre-COVID levels at the far left-hand side, 20,197. So we still have some ground to make up there. Now, if we turn our attention to the budget number, we established a target of 20,031 students. And unfortunately, we had experienced a shortfall of 1,930 students, or about 10% of what we had planned for the budget. Now, if you look, really the main driver for this was domestic student enrollment being below target. Essentially, about 1,500 student shortfall. Majority of that was in the returning student category. Now, the main cause of that shortfall is really when we look at our Winter '22 and Spring '22 terms. We had shortfalls in our entering student categories. And of course, that is going to flow through to subsequent terms. And we're experiencing that within the Fall '22. I like to call that the snowplow effect, essentially shortfall in one term will have a downstream impact on other terms. Now, on a positive note, international enrollment had a significant year-over-year increase, nearly 1,200 students, or about 45% higher than Fall '21. And although the international enrollment was below target by around 425 students, overall international enrollment returned to pre-COVID levels. And actually, our entrance student international enrollment reached a record level for the college. So definitely some positive trends that we're seeing there. So just to wrap up on this slide, the budget shortfall of over 1,900 students as well as a shortfall in Spring '22 has created a challenging budget situation that I believe Dwayne and Grant are going to touch on. But at the same time, I'm seeing some positive trends. As mentioned, international, we're seeing some strength there, which will do as well. Also, from a retention and recruitment perspective, we're definitely seeing some gains there as well. So I'll just wrap that up on Fall. If we move to the next slide, please? So what we have here, this is representing our domestic Winter '23 Level 1 or entrance students and just trying to demonstrate the progress that we're tracking to our budget. So if you look at the first bar, essentially that represents our Winter '23 budget target. And then the second bar is last year at the same point in time. And right now, we're looking at the paid and confirmed category of students. This is really our leading indicators of how we're tracking to our budget target. And as you'll notice, right now, progress to target year-to-date is 50% of that target, while last year we were at 68%. So we are trending behind on that metric, both the percentage to target as well as that absolute number of paid confirmed versus last year. Now, we still have quite a bit of time in the admissions cycle, but there is a risk that we might have a shortfall here. So it's definitely an area that we're paying attention to and developing mitigation tactics to address that. So if we could move to the next slide, please? And here we have international intake students. And you'll notice here that the metric that we're monitoring is the paid category. This again is one of the leading metrics to give indication of whether we're on track to our budget targets or not. So you'll notice here that we're quite significantly higher. We're actually sitting at around 129% of that budget target. So that's a very encouraging metric in comparison to where we were last year, around 92%. So we're definitely trending higher at this point in time. And overall, I'm positive on the current trend. But I'd like to recommend we all be cautiously optimistic on this metric we've seen in the past, that there is an element of risk with international enrollment, such things as delays in processing the study permits as an example. So again, encouraging news on the international front. A little bit of work still to be done on the domestic. But overall, there's definitely some positive trends that we're seeing for winter enrollment.
Is that your last slide, Mark?
That's it, Chris.
All right, very good. Thank you, Mark. So again, while there's some real cause for concern over where we're at for enrollment for the overall year, there is good news coming out of this. We are trending in the right direction. And there are a very large group, many teams, working very diligently toward making the overall enrollment outlook even better and taking advantage of the momentum that we're gaining. And just, I wanted to share just a little bit of news. I don't even know if Claude has seen this yet. But just this morning, we received news that we've received ministerial consent for a brand-new four-year honors degree. And this is the Bachelor of Culinary Arts and Food Science degree. So again, it's excellent news. It's an amazing degree program. And yet, one more piece of the puzzle as we build toward a more positive enrollment outlook. But with that, I would note that the enrollment shortfall is creating some very real challenges for us in year this year. And so I'll turn it over to Dwayne to lead us through that conversation.
Thank you, Chris. Good morning, everyone. I'm going to give Grant the morning off and I'll do the presentation. But he is on hand if there's any questions that I can't answer. So just to give a little context, last February, we brought a budget to the board for approval. And within that budget, there was a modest surplus of about $3 million. So on an overall budget of $350 million thereabouts, you know, it's a fairly modest level to achieve. And it's a bit of a stretch too. There was many uncertainties and challenges we still faced. We were still dealing with the impacts of the pandemic. And so this past few months, as we did our first quarter review as of June 30th, as noted, we started seeing the indications that our enrollments may be coming up short. And for all the reasons that Mark and Chris have outlined there. So that's causing us some fiscal pressures now. And the good news, though, is our partnership enrollments with CDI at our Mississauga campus have been meeting target. But overall, as of Q1, we were forecasting lower net contribution below the level committed to the board. Oops, sorry, I forgot to ask you to advance the slide. So just a few of those points and figures are highlighted here. The enrollment as of June 30th, Q1, 4.5% below our target. And overall, our net contribution is about $1.2 million below what we committed to the board. So if we just advance to the next slide. In response to these challenges, finance has implemented a number of measures to mitigate the risk of a deficit. And all of our departments and schools have some level of discretionary funds that we will require some reductions to those budgets. So not a complete elimination, but some measured reductions. Things like travel, hospitality, externally-paid professional development are a few examples where we're asking departments to take a look at your plans and adjust accordingly so we can help mitigate that risk of a deficit. We also have a few contingency provisions that we will be reducing to help us meet these challenges. And we've implemented, I'll refer to it as a soft hiring freeze. So it's not reasonable to freeze all hiring when vacancies arise. We have many needs for teaching and services to our students and our other departments. So we've just asked that the hiring managers with their executive team member to take a second look when a vacancy arises to determine, is that really an essential need? to take a a second look when a vacancy arise arises to determine, is that really an essential need that we need to fill right away, or could we achieve some savings with that vacancy to help mitigate the the risk of a deficit? And we've also frozen any addition of new full-time positions for for this this period of time. And we've undertaken a review of our SIP, our Strategic Investment Priority Spending, or capital spending, to reduce expenditures there where we can. So in summary, our our operations programs and service delivery costs are exceeding our revenues. Now, we're not in a crisis. We do have cash in the bank, so we can, we can find our way through this. But we do ask the entire college community to help resolve our challenges over the coming months and share your thoughts and ideas with your people leaders, with your colleagues, to determine how we may support the enrollment goals and recruit and retain our students, as well as container spending going forward. And a little later, we'll have a Q and A period, so I'd be happy to take any questions at that time on our our budget or our fiscal challenges. And I'll stop there and hand it over to Diane.
Thanks, Dwayne. Good morning, everyone. It is my pleasure to introduce to you Sarah Gahn, who is the Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Specialist, who'll be walking through the first couple of slides here. She will then turn it over to David Soltis, who is the Director of People and Culture, who is joining us online, and he will walk us through the third one. Over to you, Sarah.
Good morning, everyone. I think we can go on to the next slide. I'm going to share with you today a couple of projects, two looking backwards, things that have already been accomplished, and two that are upcoming that we're working on this year. So first off, on August twenty-fifth, the college inaugurated our new murals. So this, oh, I am short. On August twenty-fifth, the college inaugurated the four-part Stronger Together murals. This art has one piece at each of our campuses, so I encourage you to get out to each campus to see them, but perhaps consider starting with the AC Online mural, which is a digital mural. So you can go and experience that at any time online. This project was really conceptualized by the Inclusion and Diversity Circle. It was created through conversations with Algonquin College employees and learners and brought to life by the artist Jimmy Baptiste, Alan Andre and Calcaden Assefa. So I really encourage you to get out, check that out. It is a fully inclusive experience. So when you get out to the art, I encourage you to take your phone, touch the NFC or near-field communication code, or scan the QR code, and you can hear a described visual alternative of the art. So it's really an incredible piece to to get out and see in our community. Next, we have also, after conducting extensive reviews and consultations with employees, oh, the back a slide. Thank you. We're only on the middle square. After extensive consultations, we have just published our twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-six multi-year accessibility plan. This plan has been designed in accordance with the Integrated Accessibility Standards Regulation of the AODA, or Accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities Act. It's a little bit of a departure from what you would have seen before, because currently, we've achieved all the standards that are outlined. So this one, you really see us refining our goals around accessibility and anticipating some new emerging requirements. This plan has three main themes. It's really around accountability, education and training, and physical accessibility improvements. So you can go online. I'm sure it's going in the, it's going in the chat now, where you can find that plan and take a look at it. Now, looking ahead, the college equity, diversity and inclusion area in HR, as well as the information tech, IT, information technology services are hard at work, looking at building an employment equity census. So this new equity census, we're hoping to launch it in the new year, and we're going to be asking all employees to self-identify their demographic variables. This information is going to be really helpful for us in understanding the diversity of our workforce, as well as designing effective interventions, measuring how effective those are, and adapting accordingly. So we're hard at work building a solid, trustworthy system to collect and consider that data. Now, we can go into the next slide. And then I'm sure you're all familiar with this, because it's been coming hot into your inbox every Monday morning. But for twenty-two, twenty-three, the fiscal, this fiscal year, the major project is really focused on refreshing our inclusion and diversity blueprint. So this blueprint really is our strategy in HR of how we're going to deliver on the key outcome from Goal Three of the college's strategic plan, which really seeks to create an equitable, diverse and inclusive work environment. So the project's well underway. So far, we've completed stakeholder interviews. We've conducted benchmarking. We have connected with union leadership to solicit their input on focus areas. But now we want to hear from you. So we need your ideas, your input, your guidance, your experiences, to prepare a blueprint that really reflects employees' experiences. So every Monday, this week Tuesday, you've been getting an email inviting you to participate. Each week is a different conversation, a different question. So we invite you to go in there, let us know what you think about the topic. This week, we're talking about career inclusion at the college. This platform that we're using called Thought Exchange really allows us to hear from one another, our colleagues, and rate those those experiences and and gets us a really fulsome way of hearing many voices. So I checked this morning, our conversation that just started yesterday, we're up over eighty-five comments so far with getting close to two thousand ratings, or two thousand engagements. So jump in there. Let's hear your voice. Make sure your experience is reflected in that. And we're going to continue this all through October. So up until Halloween, whole bunch of conversations on inclusion and diversity really encourage you to participate. So that's all from me. I'll be around to answer questions if there's any on that. However, turning it over now to David Soltis, who is online, I believe.
Good, thank you, Sarah. I'd like to speak to you regarding the flexible work arrangement project and policy. Just a reminder that this project is tied to Goal Three of our twenty-two, twenty-five strategic plan, with the desired outcome of enabling flexible, adaptive work arrangements that meet the needs of our college and people. Overall, we had a successful rollout of the flexible work arrangement policy following the implementation of our work model pilots. I do want to thank the Work Model Collaboration Team for their input and advisement, as well as the Workday Support Team for launching the feature in an agile way. Some highlights from the last several months include our pre-release of the policy on June twenty-ninth to the college, which then went live on August second. To support our employees in adopting the policy and processes, we held a number of information sessions where we reviewed key components of the policy. We did a demo of the flexible work arrangement feature in Workday and discussed the flexible work arrangement checklist. Lots of great questions came forward, which were incorporated into our frequently asked questions list. Finally, to provide employees with a one-stop-shop access to all information tied to the policy, we created a centralized Policy Resource Center website. This site contains lots of great content, including toolkits, training modules, and frequently asked questions. Now, from a policy adoption perspective, we've seen positive uptake in the number of employees requesting and being approved for flexible work arrangements. As of Friday, October seventh, we had seven hundred and thirty-nine arrangements approved. This represents forty-one percent of employees eligible per policy with an arrangement. The chart on the slide shows the breakdown by arrangement option. Out of seven hundred and thirty-nine arrangements, we have two hundred and fifty-three that are fully remote, both local and non-local within Ontario. This represents thirty-five percent total arrangements. We have a hundred and fifty-nine arrangements requested are for two days onsite per week. This represents twenty-two percent of total arrangements, closely followed by three days onsite per week at a hundred and forty-nine arrangements, representing twenty percent. Once again, the data reinforces the positive rates of adoption of the policy for eligible employees. From a next steps perspective, we will be moving ahead with a number of key activities, including enhancements to the flexible work arrangement feature in Workday, including the ability to cancel duplicate requests, as well as adding a new position eligibility field in Workday. Per our original plan, we will also be deploying a survey this month to employees with a flexible work arrangement and their people leader to collect feedback on the policy, processes and impacts. An important calendar date is December sixteenth, where people leaders and employees will be required to have discussions on renewing arrangements prior to the winter twenty-twenty-three term. We will send instructions to support this adjustment and renewal process in advance of this date. Just a reminder that the flexible work arrangement feature will be open on December first to allow for completion of this step in advance of December sixteen. Throughout this process, in this period, we'll be seeking to make updates to our policy and processes as we collect information and gain insights on impacts. Finally, I do want to give a shout out to the upcoming Kaleidoscope Conference, which is being held on Tuesday, October twenty-fifth. This is our twentieth anniversary edition, and there's a close connection between flexible work, Workplace of the Future, to the Workshop Series and the keynote delivered by Dr. Rick Hubricks. I encourage you to check out the conference website and register for the event. If you have any questions regarding the flexible work arrangement policy, I encourage you to visit the Policy Center website or speak with your people leader. Thank you, and I'll send it back, I think, back to Diane.
Well, good morning, everyone. Let's get this set up. I'm going to give a ninety-minute presentation now. No, I'm just kidding. I'm your moderator for the questions today. So just give me a moment while I plug in. This is part of the job interview for new deans, just letting you know.
Chris, you're you're not new.
I'm going to demonstrate for all the new. All right, so I'm going to stick to my notes. So first of all, hello, everyone, and hi, everyone online and the entire Algonquin College community. My name is Chris Hawn, Dean, Algonquin Centre for Construction Excellence, as well as our Perth campus. Very pleased to moderate the Q and A today. I'm going to keep track on my computer screen, as well as the screen here and here. So I'm going to monitor the Q and A, as well as the chat and for those in the room as well. So the way it's going to run is if you're in the room, you simply raise your hand and someone will bring over a microphone. If you're online, just, you can also raise your hand actually online. And we'll turn, we'll unmute you, and then you can go ahead and ask your question. Or you can use the Q and A, and then I'll just keep track of them in order and do my best to sort of go between these different domains. Now, before we get started, Claude mentioned our values, caring, learning, integrity and respect. We know them off by heart. So certainly, it's in that context that we ask our questions and we answer those questions. The harder, the better. They didn't ask me to say that, but I just, I just threw that in there. So we're going to start with something that I saw in the chat, actually, and it was related to enrollment. Is there one particular factor affecting enrollment? Inflation was one of the suggestions in there, but is it any one thing? And I might start with you, Chris, but is there any insights on that one?
Thank you, Chris. Is there any one factor? The the quick answer to that is is no. It is a very complex playing field that that we're in. We have, and again, are we talking about retention? Are we talking about new students coming in? Are we talking international students? The answers will vary for for a variety of different groups. But the factors that we're hearing most often are around, surprisingly enough, financial is is not at the very, very top of the list. But it's about a combination of preparedness and and the academic program fit. There have, there, you know, questions. I'd say those are, those are the, you know, the primary things that we've been seeing. The intercept program, which tries to meet with as many students that present themselves trying to withdraw as we can possibly get to talk to us. We talk through and we ask them, what are your concerns? What do you, why are you, why are you thinking about withdrawing? Can we help? Is there a support we can provide? Is there a different program that would be a better fit? And we gather a lot of information from from students, particularly the the level-one students that are presenting at some point during their first term to withdraw. But some some upper-level students as well. So again, I'm doing this from 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 memory, but that that first category is a combination of preparedness and and program fit. So as we're thinking about enrollment, as we're thinking about those withdrawals, it's what can we all do to ensure that students are feeling well-connected? They are feeling well-supported. They have an emotional tie. They, they, if their, if their program isn't a right fit, are we working with them to find the right program for them? If they are not academically prepared, are we providing the necessary supports? And again, I realize that it's been a, it's been a rough go for the for the K through twelve schools as well. And so the the direct entry students coming to us from our K through twelve system are are not feeling as well-prepared as perhaps they did before the pandemic, even though their their marks, their their qualifications are all in place, which is what we what we base our decisions on in terms of accepting them into the programs. The college may need to find different supports for those students than we did in the past in order for them to become successful and get all the way through the program. And we need to approach that as a college, not just, it's, this isn't just on the faculty. It's not just on the student success specialist. It's not just on student support services. But every single interaction that we have with a student, every service that we provide, every action that we take at the college impacts that student experience. And we need to be extra vigilant now than we did before the pandemic. So I'm hoping I've answered the question, and I'm wondering if if there's any addition that we'd like to to have to that. But the short answer to the question, no, there is not one single factor. It's a very complicated situation.
Thank you very much, Chris. Before we, I see three hands up, but I'm going to try to go in order. So there's a first question in the Q and A from Allah. It's a question about truth and reconciliation day. So the Ontario government has not declared this a provincial holiday yet. The question really comes to if someone wishes to participate in an event on that day. If they're obviously working that day, they may not be able to do that. Is there an opportunity for staff to get time off to attend such an event on September thirtieth? Certainly, we had our own events here at the college, but if there is someone on the panel who would like to address that question?
Thank you. Thank you very much for that question. So certainly, like, remember and stay. If those that would like to celebrate off-campus and participate in some of the external events, there's the opportunity to take your vacation day for that time period. So for in next year, I would encourage you to work with your people leader to book that holiday if you wanted to participate in external events. And we are always wanting to make sure that we have and host internal events on that day to mark that day.
Thank you very much, Diane. I'll take one more in the Q and A, and then we'll move to those with their hands up. This was from Ray. Our students and staff made aware of the smoke-free status at our Woodruff campus. I think it's actually smoke-free at all three campuses. Any enforcement education around this policy? So I'm going to see if that's something maybe Dwayne, you want to take. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you for that question. I'm, I'm not clear if they are promotional materials to our students identify our campuses as smoke-free. I would think they do, but we do have signage on campus. It is an ongoing effort to improve the signage and increase the awareness of our smoke-free campus policy at all the campuses. We do have more focus from our security team around the more high-risk areas, such as the K building where the daycare is. And in the little ones, we want to ensure that it's enforced strongly there. But we don't have the the security personnel to enforce strongly across the campus. So we, when it was introduced, we asked the college community, so all of our administrators, faculty and staff, to collectively enforce and remind our our community, our students and faculty, or students and employees that they may see smoking on campus, remind them that it is a smoke-free campus. So that's the approach, but we'll take this away, the, and review our signage and, oh, well, hand it over to Tracy, who may have some more information.
Thanks. Thanks, Dwayne. So I just wanted to add that there is communication. There obviously is signage across the college. We have, it's in a rotation on our digital signs as well for the students. I have actually talked to my team about AC Day One and ensuring that the message is conveyed to our new students, because every year, obviously, we have new students coming in. So that's another area where we try and ensure that 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 message is out. But absolutely, Dwayne, we'll, we'll take whatever opportunity we can to improve and and get the message out in in different channels if we can. So improve and, and get the message out in, in different channels if we can. So we're doing our best, but happy to hear any suggestions.
Thank you, Tracy. I'm just going to turn it over now to those with their hands up. So hopefully, there was enough time to, so I see the first name. V, I think that's you, Veronica Atard. Your hand is up, and I think you can now ask your question live.
Can everyone hear me?
Absolutely. We got you.
So, Chris, since when you're a new dean?
Yeah, I know, Veronica. You'll, you'll have to grade me on how I'm doing later.
Okay. That was not my question. I have two, and I think they may be for Diane and Dwayne. So the first one is, I'm going to sound like a breaking record. We've talked about workload over and over and over again, especially for certain roles for support staff. Now there's a mention of a hiring freeze. So there's people that are moving between roles. If we can get some feedback of how that's going to solve the original workload problem, if we're doing a hiring freeze. I know there's some part-time positions, especially in support, to which have not been filled. And also people from full-time support are going to other roles, either be the admin or so on, so forth. So if somebody can provide some insight, it'd be greatly appreciated. So that's the first one.
Okay, Diane's going to take that one. Veronica?
Thanks, Veronica, for that question. So you're right, we've been talking about and dealing with workload at the executive level and through ACLT level for many, many months. We, on a weekly basis at the executive team, talk about capacity challenges and what are we doing about it that week and the next week and the week after. We have embraced a must-do, should-do, and could-do, and we are really looking at what can we pause? What can we pause right now? How that trickles down through the organization, there are some examples that in a few minutes, I'll turn it over to Chris to give an example of what he is doing in his area from a managing the workload capacity. But I want to touch on the second part of Veronica's first question, and it was, how will the hiring freeze help us with this? You're right, there are two, two different paths here. One, we're trying to deal with a financial situation and come up with some different measures to, to put things in place to help us with that financial situation. However, Dwayne did mention it's a soft hiring freeze. So what that means is there will be opportunities where vacancies will come up. And I think the last month that we reported on it was about a 6.1% vacancy rate that we have here at the college. But when you're working in an area where there's vacancies, 6.1% doesn't mean anything to you. It's like, we need these vacancies filled. So that is the conversation that that people leader will have with their dean or director, or that dean or director will have with their vice president. And it'll, we'll talk about what is the criticality of filling that, those positions? It is up to the vice president to sign off on those. And I'm not putting a lot of pressure on my colleagues, because we also have to balance that with our financial reality. But is there a way that we can either defer that, and if there isn't, then they're signing off on it? So I hope that answered the second part of your first question. Chris, did you want to take? And a couple of examples of how you're managing workload in within your area?
Sure, thanks. In terms of the, the, I'm not going to stand in front of the screen. In terms of the, the large strategic sorts of things, I've made it clear to my leadership team, there, there are three things that are going on in the academic area right now that need to move forward. The academic preparation work, the, the foundational work that needs to happen this fall. If the R3 project is going to be successful and will want, launch Thesis SM at its time, sometime in the, in the, in the earlier part of 2025, there's things that have to happen now. That work has to happen. The work with strategic enrollment manage, management. Our efforts to improve our processes, to improve our overall enrollments, which will then help drive the budget forward and help get us, get us out of the tight situation that we're currently in. The strategic enrollment management work needs to go on right now. And the academic planning work that we're doing that will really help guide the academic area and the rest of the college for the next five to six years in terms of this is where we need to get to, to be successful as a college, putting the, the academic mission front and center. That work needs to happen. In terms of any other strategic or college-wide initiative, it's negotiable. If we don't have the capacity to do it right now, let's not do it right now. Let's put a pause on that. There's a large body of other work, though, that just needs to happen, that the daily operational work. If we don't do these things now, we're not going to be able to enroll students in the fall. You know, loading, budgetary work, yeah, hiring. All, all of these sorts of things that happen in the academic area, ensuring our people get paid. These are things that do need to continue to happen regardless. These are the must-do categories. There are a number of other things that, that we're pushing back on and saying, yep, we understand why it's important to do that. But is it critical? Is the college going to stop working if we don't do that right now? If the answer is no, it's not going to stop, well, let's, let's pause that kind of work right now, and let's not invest our energy into that right now. These are conversations that are going on, and you should, in, at least in the academic services area, you should feel free to have a conversation with your manager, talk to your dean, talk to me, let me know if there's something that you think you're being asked to do that can wait, that doesn't have to happen right now. We need input from our, from our people, from our employees as well, to, to share their insights as to what we should and should not be doing at this point in time. So lots of, lots and lots of, of conversation, and we're, we're trying very hard to mitigate the workload at this point in time.
Thank you very much, Chris. And just because I see it in the chat there, and it's facing us, when is the soft hiring freeze due to start? It's essentially now, I think, is the answer. So.
Correct.
Yeah. Veronica, your hand is still up. I, I can't remember if you had a one question with a two-parter or two questions and.
I do have one more question, Chris, if you don't indulge me. This is about the employment engagement. So we had employment engagement survey a while ago. There was a team struck up. There was a plan presented to the Board of Governors. I know we mentioned we're financially tight right now, but we're going to end up again doing the survey, and the same issues and concerns are going to be there and not being addressed. Is there any plan to address or implement the work that was done by the engagement survey group? And trying to fix some of the major issues that we have at the college? And anybody from HR or any VP would like to jump in and answer?
So the question is on the employee engagement plan, and Diane's going to take that.
Thank you. So a couple of things. One is the large survey that happened in 2019 was the large employee engagement survey, and I believe that's what you were referring to, Veronica. In 2021, I believe it is, and David, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think you're online there. We did a pulse survey, and the pulse survey was really focused on a couple of questions from the broader survey. And we really honed in on working remotely. Did you have the resources that you needed to have, to be able to do your job? We've done a lot of work on all of that. So perhaps what we aren't doing well is we aren't doing the communication around what we have done well. I've seen departmental plans where the engagement within the departments have been really focused on over this last three years to say engaging people virtually, but that looks so different than when you're on campus. And then that transition into the hybrid workforce, how do you continue to engage our employees? So perhaps, Veronica, what we're not doing is we're not talking about it a lot, because there has been some other, there's been some other priorities that we've been talking about and focusing on. However, I don't think it's, the work isn't being done. David, perhaps you can add to that?
No, thanks, Diane, for that. And I know there's another question as well regarding the engagement working group, and if we're going to relaunch that. We're currently in hiring mode within HR. I do have a manager position that I'm filling, so capacity has been a challenge. But the good news is engagement is a priority. I'm working behind the scenes, of course, on the next version of the engagement survey, as this is now an operational plan item. And our plan will definitely be to engage and relaunch the working group as they're a great sounding board to solicit input on the engagement approach. When it comes to putting plan to action, you know, we, within HR, we're absolutely looking at this from our perspective and really making a heavy focus on two core areas. One is talent acquisition, and so what can we do better on that front? And I see you highlighted kind of the hiring policies, Veronica, in the chat, and that's something we're going to get into the guts, guts of as well. And the other piece is really making a, a major focus on, on things like succession, career growth, career pathing. And that is also an area within HR that we're going to focus on and setting up in the near future. And so more to come, and I agree, Diane, I think we can do a, a, a better job at communicating a lot of the great work that's been done on this front, and we can take that back as a, as an action item.
Thank you very much, David. Thanks, Veronica, for those questions. I'm going to shift over to a couple now in the chat and just is, is there, and then I'll take a question in the room, because yeah, just want to make sure we get to folks here. But there's a couple there from Jill, I think, touching on enrollment. Is there a plan to better inform returning students that their programs actually do run over the summer? Recall that numbers fell dramatically in spring '22. And then Jill asked another question related to, I'll say, enrollment and retention around January intake students. And is it possible for those students to have a full-day orientation similar to the fall? So we'll start with the returning students issue in the spring. Chris is going to take that one.
Thanks, Chris. Great question. One of the things that we've done recently over, over the summer is you, you've, you've heard of the Strategic Enrollment Committee. We've changed the governance of that committee and, and really taken some of the tactical pieces and split that up into a number of working groups. And I share that with you at the moment, because we have a, a working group that is, that is designed specifically on an integrated communications. It's making sure that we are communicating well with our students about those things that they need to hear about. And so this is a, this is a question that we, that I will bring to that committee and say it's been highlighted that we might have a challenge, and I'll turn their attention to it. But I've been in academia for more years than I really care to admit, and one of the things that I've learned over the years is in communicating with students, one particular approach and one particular method is not going to reach every student. And so I would also suggest that there are a number of ways that we need to communicate that with our, with our students. We need to ensure that we are communicating it to them as they sign up for the program so that they know, even before they accept our offer, that this is going to be a winter, spring, fall, you know, what the, what the correct order of their studies will be. So first step in the communication. Second step in the communication, I would hope that as the, the faculty are talking through with their students in the classes, they tend to listen to faculty a whole lot more than they listen to me. So just even a quick friendly reminder, hey, remember, folks, you know, Level Two is starting. Still in the right term here. And so perhaps there's yet another way that we need to be, we need to be communicating with these students. And this is what I'll take to that Integrated Communications Working Group to, are we missing an opportunity to, to reinforce that message that your next term will be here? So again, it, it's multiple modes of communication will get that message across. And if, if we're finding that there are fair numbers of students that aren't getting that message, we need to improve upon that. So that's the first question, and I think I'll turn it over to Laura for the second question.
Thanks, Chris. Just come over here to get it. Don't want to stand in.
Join me.
Yeah. Good question. And Ben Bridstock, I see, is here. So Ben, after I say my little thing, if you want to also add to that, please do. You know, orientation is so important for our students, and so we, we do evaluate every time and then really use evidence-based evaluation. And it was essentially, what are our students telling us? And Ben has relaunched and expanded across college committee on, on orientation activities. And actually, I think what we're finding is rather than loading up on one day, is, is how do we get in front of it more? How do we, how do we engage our students before they even get to campus, or back to what Chris was just talking about? How do we provide them those opportunities, whether that be in person or virtually? And then how do we continue that through, through their journey with us, especially in the first few weeks, but certainly throughout their entire journey? So we're looking for that right mix, particularly on smaller intakes, and, and what does that look like? And what does that feel like from a student perspective? So Jill, it's top of mind for us, and we're really looking to see how we can improve on that experience and really having equitable experience for all our students, regardless of when they, they start here at the college. So Ben, I don't know if there's anything more you would want to add to that? No? No, he says that was good. That was a good, he, he informs me well in our, in our meetings. He keeps me informed. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Laura. And I think, Paul, you've got a question. So do we have a mic or, thank you very much. If you could just stand when you have, that way everybody can see you and hear you, Paul, if that's okay.
Sure. My question is around mental health here in the college. I mean, we started all these initiatives over the last few years from the Psychological Health and Safety Workplace. Not myself today. We had the Dog Squad. Everything's getting canceled. I'm seeing, I mean, I knew this was coming with COVID. Everybody being stranded at home and everything, we'd have an increase in mental health issues, and I'm seeing it as the union representative, who covers a lot of them for the support staff, and I think faculty are in the same boat, and I'm sure administrators are too. What is the college's plan going forward about psychological health? Because I mean, just canceling all these initiatives, and my members are falling apart out there. I mean, I'm just, it's, it's breaking my heart. It's keeping me up at night, helping some of these people. And I'm just not seeing anything coming back from the college, like we were, we started, we started, and then we drop it again. So that's my question. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. I, I can feel the passion in your voice. So the topic is mental health and the approaches the college is taking to address that. Diane, thank you.
Thank you, Paul, and thank you for your passion on this. I too am very passionate about this. We have Tara here as well. Don't worry, I'm not turning over the mic to you, but I do, I do want to shout out you and your teams' great work. One of the things that we did from the Psychological Health and, and Safety Task Force, that was a task force that lasted for three years, and they did some amazing, amazing work. But a task force is a task force, and these people had their own jobs, and they had to get back to doing their own jobs. And what was agreed to at the task force when it was closed down was that that work would then be embedded to operationalize within human resources. And we had made a commitment to that committee, to our executive team, to say, we will take the year of '22, '23 to build the plan and then ask for it to be an operational objective in '23, '24, as we roll it out to the college community. So this month is, is Mental Health Wellness Month, and there is amazing, amazing work that is being promoted by the Wellness and Abilities Team. There's lots of information that you can find in our websites, all the different resources that we have. They continue to do the work at an operational level, but it isn't cross-college yet. That's coming out next year. What we have done is we've started working with this third party by the name of Gallagher. And Gallagher has worked and provided an, an initial training with all of the executive members on the importance of mental health in the workplace. And we again have made that commitment at the executive level that this is an important priority for us. So how it gets translated down into the whole community? I can say that next year, we're going to have a very heavy focus on that. This year, we're continuing to deal with things like workload. How do we deal with capacity challenges? There are things that we are working on, and then I also encourage you to work with your Wellness and Abilities Team and all of the amazing resources that they are putting out. Unfortunately, right now, it's virtual, like we are doing a lot of things virtual, but the resources are there. I really hope you, you take advantage of that. But thank you for that question, Paul.
Thanks, Paul, for the question. We have another hand up in the room right here, so I'll just take another one in the room. And if you could, yeah, thank you very much for doing that.
This is Karen. Thanks, Paul. I'm Karen. I'm in Student Support Services as a counselor. I just had a question about multimodal delivery. I noticed that there was a faculty, you know, shout-out to let you know that there would be some training coming up. I'm just wondering what that looks like for counselors and librarians, because oftentimes, we kind of get forgotten about around how we do teach. We do go into classrooms and do workshops and other kind of presentations. And so with multimodal, I'm wondering how that kind of training will trickle down to us.
So the question is multimodal, and I'm going to turn it to Chris. Chris, I'm just going to point you to the Q and A. There's another question there about multimodal. So training is the question on multimodal. And then the other one is, will the budget, the topic of, you know, budget constraints, is that going to impact how we roll out multimodal?
Thank you. Well, thank you very much. Great question. And quite frankly, it's one I need to take back to my team. We are, we are. We are, we are moving forward with multimodal. We are doing it in a, in a, in a very careful manner. We have not thrown open the barn door gate and said, everybody, come on in. It's one large party. We're, we need to explain, expand slowly. We need to learn as we go along. We need to ensure that everybody involved. Prior to your question, I might have said all the faculty are well-prepared and well-supported. But everybody that's going to be involved in presenting in a multimodal classroom in front of our students understands how to make it an incredible experience for both those that are attending face-to-face as well as those that are attending virtually and ensure that that both groups receive an amazing learning experience. That doesn't just happen. And so we are, we are moving forward. We are, we are, I would, I wouldn't say cautiously, I'd say methodically, increasing the college's capabilities, that the physical capabilities, building the infrastructure, ensuring we have classrooms that are, that have the correct technology to enable that amazing learning experience in either environment. These things are expensive. It takes time to to install them. It takes time to train. And we know we're going to be learning along the way. And so we're not doing it all at once. We have a multi-year plan for increasing our capacity. And we, we, through Learning and Teaching Services, are developing a really fabulous professional development course. It's really a short course that's primarily designed for faculty to to learn the pedagogy and to be able to adapt curriculum and the activities that are going on in the classroom. So let me take that back. I'll have a conversation with Maggie Kusan and the LTS team to see how we can appropriately get the counselors involved in that as well. Great question. Thank you.
Hopefully, that answers that question for you, Karen. Thanks for asking. Before we shift to somebody in the room, I'm going to take a question out of the Q and A. So this is from Jess Trask. It's Jess, you've put a lot of information in there. I'm just going to read the question at the end, which is, is there anything being done to address current workload issues before the new SIS is implemented? So the context for the SIS implementation and our current workload. The Jess makes the comment that we have new intakes, new programs, new deliveries of programs. Workday is referenced as an increase to workload. And different positions affected more than others at the support staff level. So it's, it talks about a question that we've already had, but I'm just thinking about the SIS implementation and our current workload and then the prospect of that new workload. So I'm going to look to someone on the panel to maybe give it a bit of an address on. This is the new student implementation, sorry, information system coming in. And given that our current workload issues that we have at the college, particularly at the support staff level, what's the plan to sort of address the implementation from a workload perspective?
I'm just trying to think through and understand the question. So forgive me if I get it wrong. Let me know, chime in if if I'm not capturing the gist. We're right now actually in the personalized phase, which is a long phase of the project. And I, and I see Krista in the, in the, in the back here, and she can help me out as well if I'm, if I'm going astray. And that really is about evaluating our current processes and then seeing how they map over to to the new system. All, one of the main goals of this is really to improve our processes, save time, reduce redundancy, all of those types of things. That takes time to evaluate what we currently do, what the system, the new system is capable, and with the goal of reducing work, increasing efficiency. So I don't have all the answers now, but what I can tell you is the team's working through this. The personalized phase actually started this summer and goes through until December 2023. So that's a long time to be looking at these processes because we want to do it right. And, and we want to ensure that we're, we're not causing more work. We're, we're reducing work where we can. And so what we're doing is as we go through and work and consult and make these decisions and look at processes and improve them, we define what the benefits are. We define where we will find those those savings in time and effort. And we also define where certain things in a new system may take a little longer. And in the end, the gains in our time and efficiency should far outweigh anything that might take a little longer. And so it's early days in that. I would encourage you to go to showcases to learn more, to visit the website, learn more. There are over 40 change champions, all in different departments exactly for this. If you have questions, concerns, suggestions, talk to those change champions to get a little more insight. So I feel now like I'm rambling a little bit, and I don't know if I fully answered the question.
No, you did great. I, I'll just point out Jess was talking about the current level of the workload. And we've got an SIS coming. So I think you've done well to, yeah, to address where that's going. Thank you. There's another hand. No, somebody else want to add in? Did somebody make a comment or? Okay, we're going to go to back to the folks who have their hands raised. So Martin Lee, you've got your hand up. And you're unmuted now.
Thank you. I hope people can hear me.
We can.
Excellent. So I have a question. It's an IT question. And aptly, this is the Cybersecurity Awareness Week. I've been getting plenty of emails about that. We, when we're on campus teaching, we often have to use the Microsoft Authenticator app in order to log into various things. I certainly can appreciate how important that is when I'm not on campus. But when on campus and teaching in front of classes, this is starting to become quite burdensome. We're getting prompted frequently to make sure that we are the person that we say that we are, even though we're on campus using a computer provided by the college. Additionally, of course, I'm also using my phone to do that. And I know that we can, you know, my, my personal phone, I know that we can get little toggles from the college. Although there hasn't been a lot of messaging about that. So my question is really, you know, is there any way that we can streamline this process on campus? So it's less disruptive in class, particularly as we move to multimodal, when I'm going to have to dance in front of an online scene as well as in person, this is going to be increasingly challenging.
So thank you, Martin, for the question on Microsoft Authenticator. I see that Dwayne has his hand on the microphone, so I think he's going to take that question for us.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you for that question, Martin. Unfortunately, I don't have an answer for you. It's very, I'll have to consult with my IT team. But we will take that away and take a look at it and communicate that out. If there are changes coming up, improvements in that process. But we certainly hear the, the, the challenge that you're experiencing with that. So we'll, we'll have to follow up on that one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dwayne. Martin is, so the answer is we're going to take that one away?
Thank you. I look forward to hearing about it.
Okay. I see we have a question in the room from Annette. So we'll just get the microphone to Annette. So keep the questions coming in the Q and A, and we'll keep shifting between in-person with your hands raised online as well as the Q and A. Annette, yes?
Thanks, Chris. Before I get to my question, I'm being messaged that there are questions online that are not being answered. So not folks raising their hands, but I think questions in the Q and A. I'm not seeing it. I'm just being told of that. But my question is for Chris Jansen. We have new language in our collective agreement that speaks to the college's responsibility to communicate in a new way with coordinators around coordinatorship duties. That language has been in effect since the college imposed its terms and conditions. So almost a year now since last December. But we haven't seen any real changes on the ground, right? The conversations haven't changed. The instructions haven't changed. So my question for you is what direction are you giving to your team to ensure that we do see an impact with this new language? How's the college making meaning from this new, this new term?
Well, thank you, Annette. The conversation, the, those new terms and conditions were, were put in place back in the fall, in September. And we've been living under those new terms and conditions, December? Sorry, my apologies. I am still at the phase where yesterday feels like a year ago. And that's just me. So they've been in place since, since December. And at that time, we did share a, admittedly, higher level description of the coordinator job duties. And I, and I understand that while that hasn't completely satisfied everybody's question, it does paint the picture of these, these are the boundaries for, for, for what a coordinator can be held accountable for doing. And so the individual conversations between a coordinator and their, and their chair should be happening before a coordinator accepts a coordinator position, before an individual accepts an offer of a coordinatorship. Within these, within these boundaries, within these, these categories of duties, we anticipate that this is going to be a fairly time-consuming thing for your particular situation. This is not going to be a very time-consuming thing based on the nature of the program, based on the number of students, the complexity of the program, and within those categories, to arrive at a good, a good understanding and an equitable assignment of complimentary hours associated with that coordinator duty. So that should be happening right now. That's, that's been in place since, since, since December. And that, that, it, so in some ways, it's not new since the the Capitol and Award came out.
Okay, thank you very much, Chris. I'm going to, any other hands in the room? If not, I'm going to shift to, oh. Oh, Jess wanted to follow up. Oh, yes. So actually, Sean, I see you got your hand up. But I also see Jess has her hand up right behind you. And Jess put something in the Q and A which we answered. But perhaps I didn't do justice to raising the question. Maybe we didn't have enough detail. So with your permission, I'm going to ask that Jess could just go ahead of you, Sean, if that's okay? And Jess, if we can unmute you, you can go ahead and ask your question.
Can you hear me?
Can hear you just fine.
Okay, so context was important. I actually ran out of characters when I was typing it and tried to convince.
You go ahead and Jess, in your own words now, go ahead and then we'll get it addressed.
And so there are current workload issues, which is the main point that need to be addressed. They were brought to a set last year. Some of the smaller steps were taken. But inevitably, the workload is still much too big. New budget officers are drowning. They're entering workloads with unrealistic expectations of what they can achieve. I'm not even in a budget officer role right now, but my former colleagues, like I see them struggling. So the question is, like, what's being done to address the current issues? Inevitably, when the new CISO is implemented, it will take longer. There's learning curves. And this is a position that uses the CISO heavily. It used work, workday heavily. So what's being done to make sure that once it is implemented, the workload has already been adjusted so that people don't just completely drown and fall apart?
Okay, Jess, thank you very much for that question. I'm just going to look to the leadership team here and Diane is going to start. Thank you very much, Diane.
Thank you, Jess, for asking a clarity question on that and really focusing in on current. Just to reiterate what Jess said, a group of our budget offices in the academic area did present to the executive team and walk through not only their challenges, but some potential solutions. So they came forward with, again, they know the work the best. They do it on a regular basis. And they said, this is what would help us and divided it into short-term, medium-term, and long-term. Now, to put context to it, short-term was within the first month. I, if I recall correctly, medium-term was in like three to six months, and long-term was one year to 18 months. And you do know that in this institution, things do move a little bit slowly. So we did put things into place within the first month for immediately addressing some of the short-term concerns that they needed assistance with. And we started developing plans on some of the medium-term and longer-term initiatives that they came forward with and said, this would really help us. The focus immediately was on the academic area. But what we were wanting to do was any change that we put in place to try to make these things easier, like communicating to them, creating that timekeeper group, restarting, I believe it was the Finance Advisory Group, and making sure that they were informed about changes and not, not communicating down through the hierarchy, but going to them directly, some of these things. We centralized salary calculations in HR. We did progression, progression movement centralized again within HR and took it off their plates. So these were like small things, but we were able to do them right away. Longer term, medium-term, longer term, it is structural. It is structural. And I know Chris has been doing some things with putting, putting some things in place in his area. Because again, we're focused on the academic area, but we wanted to make sure that when we did changes, it helped all of the budget officers or that equivalent role. It wasn't just a solution only for one area because we're all facing that. So don't know if you wanted to touch on some of the examples that you're doing?
Sure, let me just add a couple of, couple of quick things. There are some bigger ticket items that we are working through that will have probably a larger impact than some of the things that we've been able to do in short term. If it only takes a month or two, or maybe three or four months to accomplish, the likelihood of it having a sweeping impact is lower. So some of the medium-term, some of the longer-term things that we're working on, and I'm really hesitant to say them because I don't want to get people's hopes up. But we are looking very carefully at some things that will make a much more significant impact. But I also acknowledge and recognize that, well, you know, trust us sometime in the future, we're going to get this right, isn't very satisfying for those that are currently living through a very difficult workload. And so we are making decisions on a localized basis in places that are in a, in a, in a real critical need. So I just recently, within one area, authorized some additional resources to come in to be able to help. There was a, there was a critical shortage of, of resources due to a number of different factors. And so, yes, this, this involved bringing additional people onto the staff to try to help mitigate some of those. But those are, those are only some of those things. Some of the other questions that I talked about earlier in terms of prioritization, we're also asking, do we really want to ask our budget officers to do this right now? Does, is this really the work that we want them to be doing? And so we're trying to take some things off the plate as well. And so it's, it's a, it's a multi-pronged approach. And I realized that it's, it's much like washing, watching, watching iceberg melt. You know, drip, 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 it doesn't seem to make much difference. But if you watch long enough, there's not as much of the iceberg left. And so in this particular case, that iceberg is the, is the budget officer workload. We pay attention to it. This is something that the executive team brings back once a month. And we talk about what progress have we made since last month on this topic? And we have a number of initiatives that we're tracking the progress on. So it's not something we are ignoring. We are trying to take meaningful action now to, to make things better. So please continue to work with us. Please continue to share. Please continue to have conversations with your manager when you're asking, you're being asked to do something that you don't think is going to bring value to the job that you believe needs to be done, and let's talk about it. We need, we need to get better at saying, this isn't what we should be focusing on right now.
Jess, thank you for asking your question live in addition to the chat and Chris for responding as well as Diane. Appreciate that. What I'm going to do is shift to the Q and As for a couple here. Just so you know, on a time check, we're here till just, just shy of noon. So there's, there is lots of time to get your questions in. So Jill, you had asked a question about December 23rd. Is it a non-working day? And is, is it a mandatory non-working day? As a program coordinator, with marks being available to students the day prior, your inbox, you expect will be, will be full. So Jill, I don't know if that's a question for our So Jill, I don't know if that's a question for our panel, or maybe for the person, your chair, Jill. But is it a mandatory? It's a non-working day? It's a it's a non-working day is, yeah. So the announcement went out, unless somebody wants to add to that. Okay. Colette, you've asked a question as well in the Q and A. The Employee Engagement Working Group has been put on hold, and your question is, is it going to be moving forward? Is that group gonna be moving forward? Diane?
I wouldn't mind turning it over to David. I believe David provided an answer in his overview about next steps on employee engagement, but perhaps you can expand on that, David?
Sure. No, thanks, Diane. As I mentioned earlier in my early response, and actually, just to shoot it up with a teammate, we will be relaunching the Engagement Working Group. As I mentioned, there's a lot of great work that's been done to date that we can look at as a team and communicate out. We can revisit the final report that we produced and get a status on the initiatives that were tabled. And then, of course, start to really look at the employee engagement roadmap for the remainder of the fiscal year, which will include the employee engagement survey as well. So more to come, and there will be an invite sent out shortly on that one, Diane. Thank you.
Okay, and Sean, I see you took your hand down. So Sean, if you wanna put your hand back up if you have a question. Sean Pentecost online. There it is, Sean. Go right ahead. We'll unmute you, and you can go ahead and ask your question.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry, Chris. Thank you. There was a little bit of confusion there. So my question has to do with, other than full-time faculty. So as we know, the college, you know, relies on on these folks and relies quite heavily on their volunteerism. And, you know, from a perspective of, you know, someone who works with my, other than full-time colleagues, you know, I do think it's an overreliance. But something, my question directly, has to do with multimodal delivery and preparation. So the Kaplan Award awarded in his decision, awarded under a letter of understanding that managers or people leaders, I guess, will have conversations with full-time faculty about how much time they need to convert a course to multimodal. Kaplan is silent on that for partial load, and of course, our sessional and part-time faculty are not covered by a collective agreement. What I'm asking is, is will the college commit to have the same types of conversations with these precarious workers?
Thank you very much, Sean. I'm looking at Chris Jansen. He'll take that take that on. Thank you, Chris.
Well, thank you, Sean. And I and I agree, as I read through the Kaplan Award, I noted that it was silent, and it didn't meet with what I thought needed to happen. So the the good news is that this this fairly extensive professional development, the short course, if you will, that we are designing for faculty, is being designed for all faculty that are going to be assigned to teach in multimodal. So this is including partial load, including part-time, including sessional. Anybody that is going to be assigned to teach in multimodal is going to be required to take this training. We recognize we've we've got a bit of a time shift that needs to happen to catch up folks that have already been working in that realm, those that are going to be teaching in the winter term, and really looking forward to spring and fall. Ideally, this should be completed in the semester or two, leading up to an individual's first experience teaching in multimodal. Part of that will be talking through what's necessary and how to redesign and redevelop courses, the 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 experiences, the activities, the modes of assessment, how things are going to be presented, to ensure that pedagogy is designed into the course, the delivery of the course, to enable both those those that are attending face to face and those that are attending virtually have that amazing learning experience. So all faculty that are going to be in multimodal are going to be expected to be going through this training, part of which is conversations around how to how to adapt courses to this to enable student success. So I agree, and yes.
So so just to clarify, Chris, so I understand about the training, and I understand that's mandatory, and I believe our other than full-time folks will be paid at the meeting rate for that. I just want to make sure that I understand correctly that beyond that, other than full-time faculty, will be able to have conversations with their managers about being compensated for converting their courses, not just taking the training?
Absolutely. They are absolutely welcome and invited to have those conversations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. I'm just gonna check the room for hands, make sure I'm not ignoring anyone. Okay, so thank you, Sean. We'll go. Actually, Dwayne, there's a couple here about the about the smoking. I know you had answered that already, but it's just maybe to respond to a couple of locations. There's one mentioned at the ACE entrance baseline station. There was a mention about the flagpoles outside of C building, sort of very specific locations. And question is about perhaps security or someone making their way to check those. So maybe you can just respond to those two, and then we'll move on.
Sure. Yes, so we are we're aware of these areas where there seems to be a higher degree of smoking going on than other areas. So we'll take that away. We do ask when we have the capacity amongst our security personnel to to have a little more presence at those areas, so they are aware of them. But it's it's really a resourcing issue. But for now, we'll take it away and see if we can do a little more, perhaps through communications and and just making sure everyone's aware of the smoke-free policy.
Thanks, Dwayne. I have a question from Laura Gerald. I'll read it out. I appreciate the financial and enrollment-related information provided today. Building on Chris Jansen's comments, it is a whole college responsibility to support students in enrollment. Question is, do we feel we have the right resources in the right places to maximize support for student enrollment, student success, and student retention? Is there any consideration for the redeployment of internal resources and/or vacancies to support these functions? So I'm gonna thank you, Chris, because I'll start off with a reply. Do you want to just stay up here, Chris, so you can keep me company?
Kick off the Chris and Chris show? Chris and I have often joked about starting a radio show together. Yeah, I know. That's the that's the response we get from everybody, too. Great question. And also, let me remind folks that this is one of the strategic enrollment planning is one of the three main strategic efforts that need to happen now to prepare us for the future. And so we need to find a way of ensuring that that work is not just planned, but also enacted. And so recognizing that this is one of the critical functions that the college needs to accomplish, the strategic enrollment plan that we're putting together, which is a five-year enrollment plan designed to meet our enrollment targets for the next five years, we're going to need to ensure that the initiatives put in place to meet those enrollment targets are properly resourced. And if we do not have new resources available, the easiest resources to find are those that are existing. And so we would need to reprioritize our priorities. Reprioritize our priorities. I can do better than that. We need to shift our thinking about how we're utilizing our existing resources to ensure that we're going to meet those enrollment targets, which drive the college forward. And I might also say is our reason for being here. So absolutely, yes.
Thank you, Laura, for that question. Colette, I see your question in the Q and A, but I'm just gonna go to Robert Harvey's, because they seem to be on this theme of budget and enrollment. So Robert has asked a question for Dwayne with our registration challenges. What is our amended budget income or loss for the year? So, Dwayne, if you wanna maybe have a hand at that. And then Robert has a follow-up around domestic enrollment and what we're doing to to address that and a suggestion around providing buses to pick up domestic students for our open house, which is happening on November 5th. And then there's another question around, actually, I'll get to that one later. So otherwise, you'll lose track, Dwayne. You won't know which what I've asked you. So the amended budget income or loss for the year.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Thanks, Rob. The the Q1 projection report will be presented to the board at this month's board meeting, so it will be public at that time. Just going by memory, our surplus is being amended from $3 million at approved budget to about 1.8 million Q1 projection. So that's as of September 30. I'm just reminding folks, much has happened, or sorry, that's as of June 30. Much has happened since then. So we're also working on our Q2 projection, which will go to the board in a month later. The revenue adjustment, I'm going to say it's probably a bit about 15 or 20 million overall with the enrollment-related revenue shortfall in our in our contract training, contract activity revenue adjustment. So that's some ballpark figures. But again, they'll be public at the board in a week or so, and then we'll have a Q2 update that will be publicly announced at the board a month later. Thank you.
Actually, no, Dwayne, I think you're off the hook. So thank you, Robert, for that question. But in this theme of budget and enrollment, Robert, two questions. Our domestic enrollment is falling. Can we provide buses to pick up domestic students for the college open house is the first question. And the second one is, at the open house, given that it's on a Saturday as well, will other than full-time faculty be paid for attending? Those are the two questions from Robert, and then we'll get to Colette.
Thanks. In terms of the buses, I know Alana is here as well. So Alana, please chime in. We don't perceive getting individuals to advance as a barrier. It's really about how we offer things out in the community, virtually, in person, and and awareness through, you'll see this great new campaign on buses and on the radio. So that that is not a perceived barrier for us. But again, it's what Chris was mentioning. It's really, you know, how we can all play a role in awareness and engagement of what a great place this is. What we haven't said today, too, is it's a really hot job market. And in times where employment is readily available, domestic enrollment does tend to decline. So again, it's getting out there and telling our story and engaging in a very compelling way, but but we're competing with it with an extremely hot job market as well. So I just I just wanted to point that out. I'm sorry, I forget the other part of the question.
Yeah, the second question is probably more for for Chris. It's as the open house will be on a Saturday, will other than full-time faculty be paid for attending?
Sure. We absolutely welcome anybody that wants to participate in open house. Perspective students are often most interested in talking to the faculty to learn about their their program. And so that said, anybody that wants to attend, we welcome. We will, however, be asking some other than full-time faculty specifically, we really need you to attend. Whether this is because it's it's in a program where full-time faculty cannot attend, or in a semester where there aren't full-time faculty associated with a program, which does happen from time to time. So those 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 that we are, we are, in essence, assigning work to saying, we need you to come. We will absolutely be paying them. For those that that want to participate, but we have other coverage, we welcome and would be delighted to have them participate and help recruit additional students.
Thank you very much, Chris. There's one question left in the Q and A, so we still have time left. If there's anyone that does want to ask a question in the room or raise their hand online, I see Sarah has her hand up. Sarah, I'll just read the one Q and A out here, and then you can go next. So again, just to, if you have questions, now's the time. The panel is here and ready, so feel free to put those in the Q and A. Wellness and abilities has been, I'm just gonna read this out from Colette Garvin. Wellness and abilities has been given a mandate that remote work is not an option regarding an accommodation, meaning you must teach face to face or go on sick leave. Is there a reason why the college is taking this approach to accommodating faculty who may be able to effectively contribute to the organization if given the opportunity to teach remotely, especially when various course sections are currently being taught remotely? Just looking at the panel, Diane is gonna take this question. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thanks, Colette, for that. So I'm not aware of specific cases, but what I can talk you about is the flexible work arrangement policy does exclude teaching faculty. And the reason for that, and again, it's teaching faculty, and the reason for that is their assignments are a little bit different. Their assignments are driven from the standard workload formula, which is a collection of what are the courses that they are going to be delivering. Related to the operational reasons as to why certain sections have to be delivered remotely or hybrid or onsite, that's more of an individual case or an assignment perspective. So I'm not really able to answer the the question directly. I would encourage from a question, Colette, that you can come and talk to our wellness and abilities team. I can talk about from a from a policy perspective that teaching faculty are not covered under that policy. However, it does derive from their assignments that they are provided on their SWIFs. Not sure if there's anything else that we can add to that, Chris?
Let me try to add just a just a little bit. I'm not gonna be able to speak to specific instances either, but what I can share is that what I asked of my team was to ensure that we made decisions on delivery based on pedagogy rather than individuals. So for this particular level of this particular program or this particular course within this particular level of this particular program, that we think about how best to serve the majority of our students. How best to provide them the highest quality learning experiences that we could provide those students? And that answer is not going to be the same across even necessarily every course in a single program. So those decisions are made even before we think about who are we going to assign that work to, whether it's on a SWIF to a full-time faculty member or through a contract with an other than full-time faculty member. So those decisions are made upfront, and it's based on those decisions that then the expectations of modality of delivery for that work and the individuals that will be going to be performing that work are made.
Thank you very much, Chris. And Sarah?
Thank you. My question is more on a systemic, structural level. Are there discussions happening across the province amongst all of the colleges to really think about specializing more for each college? It seems that we're competing against our brothers and sisters in crime. And I assume there probably are those discussions, given that we seem to be in a really tight spot financially, and I know we're not alone. There's a lot of reliance on international students. But what strategies can you share with us that might be happening at a higher level?
Do you want to take that quote?
Yeah, the minute the minute I heard college system and province, I thought, give me, give me the mic, Chris. Great question, Sarah. And there have been times in our history when that has taken place. I recall an example around, I'll give you two, photonics. You recall back at the turn of this millennium, when this was a new term? And at that time, the province thought, not every college can do this, high investment. And they had declared three colleges that would deliver that particular training. It was ourselves, it was Niagara, and I forget the third college. Another example, aviation programs. So a lot of people want to get into aviation. It's expensive to get into it. And again, the province put their foot down, so to speak, in trying to shape where that training would take place. Another area where you see it a little bit is on apprenticeship side with TDA, so Training Delivery Agency, status to deliver a specific program where there's a process to ensure that this consultation before a program is offered locally. Because if it's offered by others, they may raise up their hand and say, we have an issue with this. The ministry would listen. In this case, it's not MCU anymore. It's the Ministry of Labor, Immigration, Skills Trade and Development. But there is a process for that. There are also occasions where we bandy up, we come together as a number of colleges to construct a solution so that we avoid the issue of trying to compete with one another. Recent example, we announced this past winter was a three-college partnership to deliver, again, was for apprentices, is the degree program completely to deliver, again, was for apprentices, is the degree program completely online, uh, in the era of business administration for apprentices, uh, going into journey status who want to learn about entrepreneurialism, uh, business practices, et cetera. And it is us, George Brown, and Mohawk. So, we've created a program, the three colleges come together to deliver it, it's one product, um, and the graduates can graduate from any of the three colleges. Uh, we have another partnership with North, some Northern colleges, uh, it's a project we call affectionately MCCM, it stands for Multi-College Collaborative Model, right? Okay, um, it includes Northern, uh, it includes Sioux and Lampton, I believe. And again, trying to find solutions to problem, thorny problems where in some areas, they don't have enough demand to have a full cohort to take a program, and could we offer a program jointly, have perhaps one host college deliver parts of it, and the students would attend from another college, um, and the teaching could be, um, uh, distributed. So, there's all kinds of efforts, uh, to do just what you're talking about. There's also efforts to standardize delivery as well, so that students who start a program in place X and then transfer for whatever reason to another college are not doing the snakes and ladder and have to go back to square one and start the program all over again. And we've had these moments where 24 colleges, or has many colleges who offer a particular program come together to sign an agreement to really tighten up the standards, tighten up the programming, so that there is more consistency, not only, uh, amongst, let's see, the campuses of the college, but across the entire college system. So, having said all this, we are community colleges, and we respond to community need as well, um, and that's the reason we exist, is to be close to the employers, close to the, um, agencies, the industry that need the expertise that we deliver, the talent pipelines. And so, yes, we're gonna have a lot of similar programs, everybody's gonna have a school business, a lot of programming will be in areas that you expect every city to have businesses in, whether it's in healthcare, whether it's in IT, we're all gonna have very similar programming for, for those schools. Where it gets, uh, perhaps more specialized is some of the programs I mentioned that are either very niche or very expensive to deliver, and the ministry is, as, as I said, historically, um, assisted in shaping that, at times not. Uh, final comment I'll make on this is, uh, strategic mandate agreement, so, uh, strategic mandate agreement one and two focused a little bit on that by asking the colleges to declare their areas of expertise and their areas of growth. And we at this college do the, in my view, a tremendous job to categorize those areas and demonstrate to the ministry that those, those would be our areas of focus, where we would grow enrollment, and in return, the ministry would facilitate program approval in those areas, and may have more need for discussion for programs that you would want to launch that are not in those areas. So, that was another area to try to, uh, shape workforce talent development, if you wish, in particular regions of Ontario. They have since abandoned that in favor of SMA III, which is more focused on performance of colleges based on economic indicators, how we contribute to the economy of the local population, um, and determinants related to how we perform in terms of graduation, et cetera. So, they've abandoned, if you wish, the, the human shaping, if you wish, of the talent development for the province in favor of performance-based indicators. But though, that doesn't diminish our efforts to try not to replicate things where we don't have to. Um, again, we, we follow the demand where our employers need talent, because if we don't, somebody else will come in and try to deliver that. And, and there's a, a lot of pressure on placement, remember, a lot of what we do relies also on experiential learning, uh, for our, our students, that's true of every other institution, and now universities are doing that as well. So, there's a lot of pressure, um, to find placements for students, find, um, opportunities for creating those either work-integrated learning opportunities for students, so there's a lot of pressures on colleges to, to do that, and again, that's another dimension that we need to be mindful of when we either create a new program or expand a program. Again, I'm very passionate about this, could go at length, but I hope that answers your question. Okay, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you very much, thank you, Claude. We've got about five, um, five, 10 minutes left, so there is some time to get a, a few more questions in. One from Sean, I'll, I'll read out, um, in the Q and A, but just a reminder, if you do have questions in the room or online, just raise your hand. So, Sean asks, as a follow-up, uh, to the question of open house on Saturday, uh, will this work be captured on the full-time members' standard workload forms and follow the payment of overtime as outlined in the collective agreement? And Chris is gonna take that question.
Sure. Thanks, Sean. Um, it, it, the open house always seems to bring this question up, and it, it, it's always a challenging answer, because we, we do ask for, uh, for, uh, you know, some volunteer and recognizing that all of us have a, have a role to play in, in getting those students, uh, enrolled in the programs to keep this all going. Uh, that said, we are also very cognizant of assigning work, uh, outside of the, the collective agreements, and so we will take this away, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll chat amongst ourselves, um, my, my, with me and my leadership team, uh, and see where we land, so I will, I will get, come back to this on it, um, but I also note that, uh, you know, when we are assigning work, uh, we do always ensure that we are following the collective agreements.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Now, there are no other questions in the Q and A, I don't see anything else in the chat. Uh, oh, got a couple of hands here, um, two hands in the back row here. Oh, we already have the mic, that's awesome.
Mine's a little bit of a picker-upper, it's about, say, yeah, I'm, um, mine's an invitation to, to everyone, um, for the, um, employee engagement opportunity, Kaleidoscope has come up a couple of times, um, this morning, and, uh, thank you to David and to some folks online, including, um, Nicole, who's put up the, the link to sign up. So, on behalf of our planning, cross-college planning team, a number of us that are in the room here today, Brian, Barry Seller, and Gabrielle Barubi, and a few others online, uh, Nicole, and Tanya, and a few others, um, our program has come together, and, um, I have some posters in the back, if you want to take them back to your departments and schools, uh, to share the news, we have a great program, it's one of the, our employee annual conference, that's for the people, by the people, and by that, we say, apart from the, the keynote, um, the program for the day is, is made up by, uh, employees at the college, and as I look around the room, I'm seeing, uh, some of the, uh, folks that have come forward to put some, uh, some workshops forward, uh, from going up to the library to look at our, um, you know, our resources in the library, opportunities to network, um, understanding student services, uh, Cal has put something in as well, um, there's a number of, um, uh, services that are being, um, shared with you, and opportunities that you can, can, can take advantage of. So, on your way out, don't forget to pick up your posters, the URL code is on there, thanks to all of you that are, have already registered, the numbers are high, and so we're hoping to see more, we have a set commitment that, uh, this is in break week, so that we don't have, um, uh, a lot of meetings, and that we have meetings in the rest of the week, but to reserve the Tuesday, the 25th of October, to come out and to share and to network with, uh, employees. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that invitation, Val, appreciate that. Um, are there any questions that, uh, need to be revisited? Maybe, uh, there was a comment, maybe we didn't, uh, answer everything, if there's anything that needs to be revisited, we have a few minutes left. Or anything else for the Q and A, or anyone online who wishes to raise their hand and last goes to those folks in the room? If you have your, if you have a question you want answered. While you're thinking, um, I'll just, uh, make a few remarks, I just want to thank everybody who asked a question, uh, those are important, uh, questions to ask. The leadership team, thank you very much for, uh, addressing, uh, those questions with your answers, it's not easy, I know. And, um, I just want to thank everyone for participating today. Um, just a reminder, if you weren't able to get a question asked, or, um, you know, maybe it wasn't fully addressed, then please talk to your, to your manager, one up, who can, uh, help, um, get the answer that you, uh, that you're looking for. Uh, just a note from me, it was a pleasure to be your moderator today, um, it's also not as easy as it looks, I, I don't know, where is Susan? Susan? I don't know, Susan, next time, next time we get a call about moderating, I don't know. Um, a reminder to, uh, fill out the survey, there will be a survey, and the reason for that is so we can continue to improve these town halls, uh, there'll be an additional question in there, uh, to get your suggestions regarding enrollment and budget as well, and that's so we can continue to work together to find solutions. If there are no other questions, I'm gonna invite Claude back up to the podium, uh, for our community closing.
Well, thank you very much, Chris, and, uh, judging by the applause you got, come on, you, you did a great job as emcee here, we'll definitely re-invite. You, you are a natural. Um, I do want to also echo the accolades that, uh, Chris, uh, gave to everyone who participated, asked a question, it's, uh, often, you know, not easy to, to take that step, put up your hand, uh, ask a question or type it in, those were very important questions. We want to celebrate all the great things that we're doing as a college, we have terrific things we should be absolutely so proud of, we need to shout from the mountaintops, and at the same time, there are things we need to do, um, differently, better, continuously improve on, and you've heard some of that today, we do have a burning platform, I hope that was made loud and clear to you today around enrollment, and, and everyone I know is doing their level best to, to bring in, um, new students, ensuring returning students come back to us, and, uh, we need to continue to do that. Uh, it's, it's, there's a competition, uh, on talent, there's competition, we, we heard, you know, that the workforce out there is, is, is pulling would-be students who are going to the workplace instead of coming to college, and that may indicate that we need to deliver our learning differently, that maybe, you know, part of it is not a one-size-fits-all solution, uh, where students must come here for a period of said program, uh, and cannot work at the same time, we, we'll, we'll need to figure out what those new solutions need to be for the new students of today. The demographics are very powerful, I have to say, and I've said it a thousand times as well, the 18 to 24-year-olds are going and diminishing return, um, so there, there are things we need to adjust to, uh, in terms of who is our new audience and how we relate to them, uh, most are indirect students now, and so, when you used to have a more captive audience in a high school, uh, related to direct entry students, that's, that those percentages are going down proportionally to indirect. Lots of things that we need to consider, uh, and it takes a village, it takes all of us, um, at Algonquin College, to make this the, the vibrant, the perspective, to the prospective students and their parents, whoever their influences are, that will cause them to want to come and learn with us, and that's who we need to resonate with, that's who we need to get the attention of, um, and ensure that the students get a dynamite college experience when they're with us, and I know we will prevail, um, I know we have the solutions here with us, so thank you for continuing your efforts in this regard, and again, thank you for coming together as a community, this is our first town hall, uh, for the year, we're gonna have more, uh, over the coming months, and I look forward to our continued engagement, uh, because the work we do, uh, is not only for, uh, the graduates, the people of today, but also the young ones of tomorrow, who will need, uh, to learn and be pers- prosperous in our community. With that, uh, and with a good mind, thank you very much, everyone, have a great day.